Yeah.
I don't know. I mean. If you're gonna post it, you should be here to read the letter.
It's my take on it.
Okay.
By the way, if you guys start putting everything in that everybody sends us.
Well, this one specifically said, please read this letter into the record. I think we can fit it, which is already submitted online.
I believe it's the same thing he had as an editorial.
It ain't coming off. We've lost the guy.
Yes, must have hit it just.
His keys are in the. Say what?
He's gone, Brad.
Oh, they're stuck in there? Probably got a real winter. That everyone wishing for.
Keys are in the door.
Yeah, that's broken.
Oh.
I will write them down.
We're back.
I'll, I'll lie. Is it actually broken?
Yeah.
Oh.
Finally.
Yeah. What's, what's that? Got her frozen out. We got her frozen out. Anyway, get the key. Ah. Give me something to put in the door.
As long as they.
Four.
Just lock it open?
It, it won't close anyway. Just a bit.
Oh, it's, it's holding up or holding the hose?
Yeah.
Ah, no, really not so much.
Uh, let's see, man. So, yep.
Don't need the key stuck in the lock.
Yeah. So, yes, it's currently a lot now. It'll be a lot too. Right here could actually lose here.
Aren't they?
Thought so, sure. We got the key stuck in the front door.
Yeah, so.
Roger's stolen stuff.
Everyone's tried, but don't seem to get it all.
Everybody try it on? Is that Roger's key out there?
No, it's been. Oh, it's been.
We all have, and Roger's locking key is on their way.
And just shut it down.
Yep.
Now we gotta go around with the hot out.
Get it asked in.
You're only about the sixth person.
Okay. For somebody else to come in, I'll try to tell them to turn the key.
Who put the key in there broken?
Hey. Then I went out and I thought I could put my key in and try to get it to open. And that's what we have.
Oh, yeah.
Can you hear that key?
That won't work. You gotta use a fob.
Oh, okay.
The key won't even.
I feel like I'm gonna spit on a show right now.
We need to get a piece of tape over the lock.
You can't get the key out.
We have, Brett, you know, we can put it in that door.
Well, once he gets it, then the lock will stick out. So.
Yeah.
How many of you just screwed up now?
Only if you don't.
You hit the lock.
Is it you? Aunt Ross News Media. Yeah.
Thank you. Because you just didn't want me coming in.
Good morning, the lock.
Morning.
Hold this open for you. My lock was.
Good morning. He's picking on you.
Are you blocking?
Actually, he probably.
Usually the ones that's pointing fingers is the one.
Something did you want in the middle of my driveway, so.
I was trying to stop.
Who wants to meet with the crazier at eleven o'clock on Wednesday, the? Seventeenth.
That's this. That's this.
Yeah, yeah, out at the. So here, you wanna call him? His cell phone number is right there. Or you can email him. But you could call him and meet him there.
Oh, no, I can't. I'm gone.
Okay.
Gosh, dang it.
What day? Thursday?
Wednesday at eleven. To meet up there so we can look around the building.
I've never been in that building.
Yeah.
I guess I could. We just have a, probably should.
I should let the noise coming.
I figured it wasn't. Business that we need to get somebody arranged.
Yeah, well.
Get somebody figured out.
Yeah, the door is. Will close, it won't open again.
Wonder how many more times we're gonna go through this?
Yeah, just.
All right, well, it's nine thirty. All those that saw the hooch, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the media to order when anyone present. Item on the agenda this morning is Tony Thorpe's pay matrix discussion. Glad, Tony?
Good morning. I'm here this morning to show you why your pay matrix system is on the path to becoming irrelevant. I'm going to show you how using discretionary power to make exceptions to the rule of the matrix actually creates the disparity of compensation that the matrix was adopted to eliminate. In the closing, I'm going to ask you to choose a route to prevent the further destruction of the fair and just compensation for the employees of the management account. I gave all of you the same thing I'm reading here. Got mentioned that? So here's the history of how we got the matrix system. Not that long ago, county employee compensation was determined by the department heads with the supervisor's approval. This led to disparity or perceived disparity in pay between similar jobs in different departments. It also created a fairly consistent stream of department heads trying to justify a need for higher wages for their employees. The matrix system was implemented to create a standard paycheck by arranging job descriptions into grades. Grades were determined, uh, these grades were determined by the job's minimum required qualifications, such as education required, experience required, autonomy afforded, and other factors. Then columns were added to account for longevity and act as a sort of predetermined annual increase. The supervisors no longer had to make decisions on individual requests because all compensation was set by the factual job requirements and not the individual doing the job. The system was reevaluated once and adopted by the board of supervisors, by this board of supervisors. But like any policy, when it is not understood and allowed to operate with exceptions, it will fail. Examples of the misunderstanding and policies of exceptions. The board of supervisors have adopted the matrix without realizing the matrix is not hourly based. It is annually based. Meaning the compensation listed is the annual pay whether you are working thirty-five hours a week or forty hours a week. All thirty-five hour week positions are being paid more per hour than the equivalent forty hour per week position. So a true scenario that we have administrative assistants are pay grade twelve. Uh, at the end of the handout I gave you, I actually have the matrix. So all administrative assistants are pay grade twelve, starting pay of forty-two thousand, forty-seven dollars annually. An engineer's administrative assistant working forty hours is starting at twenty dollars and twenty-one cents an hour. While an administrative assistant in the veteran's office is starting at twenty-three dollars and ten cents an hour, working thirty-five hours. That equates to a two dollar and eighty-nine cent per hour more to the thirty-five hour employee. Another scenario, a forty hour department head, pay grade twenty-one, column C, is making seventy-two thousand, four hundred annually or thirty-four dollars and eighty cents an hour. While a thirty-five hour department head, pay grade nineteen, two pay grades less, in the same column is making sixty-two thousand, four annually or thirty-four dollars and twenty-nine cents an hour. Two pay grades higher is only a fifty cent per hour premium in pay. In the initial implementation of the matrix, the board chose to ignore the longevity of employment by placing all existing employees in the matrix at the new pay grade and plus one step from their current pay. Pay grades are assigned by the job descriptions being scored. Experience is built into the job description. The board also has a discretionary special exception to policy where the board can place an applicant at a higher column in specific instances where the employee had extra experience or skills. This means the experience level can be credited twice as a special exception. Another true scenario, a department head with twenty-seven years' experience on the job was determined that he should have been at a pay grade twenty-one. He was moved up with one bump to a column B at seventy thousand, six hundred dollars a year. One year later, a non-department head position applicant having zero years with the county was hired as a pay grade twenty-one, column E, at seventy-six thousand dollars with the justification that he had twelve years' experience in his field. Twenty-seven years' experience earned seventy thousand dollars and twelve years' experience earned seventy-six thousand dollars. And he's not even a department head. The board of supervisors policy for employees changing pay grades. The incumbent salary rate will be set at the minimum of the new pay range or at a step higher than the incumbent's current rate, current rate. This policy was assumed to be for going up pay grades. Does not make any sense for going down pay grades. Why would you be, be, why would you be paid more to take a job that requires lower qualifications? True scenario, an employee at a grade twenty-two, column C, with a base pay of seventy-nine, nine per year, chose to apply for a lower paying grade twenty-one job that had a starting pay of sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred dollars a year. Was subsequently hired for the job in pay grade twenty-one at column I, eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars per year, plus other tangible benefits that are not available to employees in similar positions. The county is spending approximately an extra twenty thousand dollars annually because of a policy of precedence that probably should not apply. Remember the department head with twenty-seven years' experience, also at a grade twenty-one, but column C at seventy-two thousand, four hundred dollars a year or approximately seventeen thousand, six hundred dollars per year less in cash and prizes than the brand new department head. The matrix system was adopted because the supervisors recognized the need for a consistent, fair, and unbiased approach in assigning compensation to employees. The matrix cannot work if it is not followed or allowed exceptions. According to the order, this board of supervisors have hired six full-time matrix employees. I have listed them, won't read them off. Two were hired and placed on the matrix as intended. Two are thirty-five hour week employees that are compensated at a rate of approximately a hundred and fourteen percent greater than the equivalent forty hour employees. And two were hired under discretionary special policy or exception to the policy where they were rewarded for experience twice or rewarded for seeking underemployment. How is this consistent, fair, and unbiased compensation? At what point do the exceptions become the rule and compensation is no longer set for the job being done, but for the person doing it? What I am asking the board of supervisors today is to choose one of the two alternatives. Number one, if you as the board of supervisors are not going to support the consistent use of the matrix without exceptions, simply discard it. Not that many employees are compensated by the matrix anyway. It would go back to department heads to determine starting pay and longevity increases for their employees with the board's approval of the budget. Or number two, if you desire to continue the use of the matrix, you need to make a determination on the hourly basis of the matrix values with immediate implementation. And then create and adopt a written policy on how employee compensation will be set using the matrix. This must include methods for the creation, review, and scoring of job descriptions by an impartial professional to keep the matrix system current and fair. And finally, it must be implemented consistently and defended staunchly without exceptions. The state of Iowa uses a matrix type system without exception. We have state employees in our biggest cities and right here in rural Iowa, and it is a fact that the matrix can be utilized without exceptions. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions?
I do have a comment that everything we have done, we've run through, uh, the HR attorney that we hired to help us review that matrix last time. Any new job descriptions have been run through then? Am I correct?
They're the, they are. The point he said about having a impartial outside professionals score of job descriptions is being utilized.
Have we had Conray rescore or reanalyze some different?
If we have new ones or if we ask them to analyze them, they have. We don't have anything that analyzes them on a regular basis.
Just to refresh, when Conray did that, they did not consider forty and thirty-five difference?
No.
This makes sense?
Absolutely.
It makes sense to keep the thirty-five and thirty-hour people with no difference?
They made, they made, your comments make sense.
Yes.
I apologize.
Yeah.
Cause that's same thing we were talking about as far as insurance. Your benefits are so much more per hour for insurance if you work in the thirty-five over the forty. And part of the issue runs in that elected officials can determine their own hours, so.
We have thirty-five hour employees that are not like elected official.
I know. I'm aware of that.
Definitely did your homework.
Thank you.
Take a look at it. Prestidious.
I think it definitely emphasized the need for a HR person. Can deal with these issues.
Insurance costs amounts to about a dollar an hour more for a thirty-five hour employee versus a forty hour employee. No matter what plan they choose.
And speaking of insurance, Brian Hinker is not gonna be here on, cross him off the agenda. He had a sick kid today, so he's gonna reschedule for.
I don't think any of us are prepared to have a longer discussion on this on an open meeting right now, but I would suggest that we look at having this on the next future open meetings that we can discuss it further.
Sooner the better.
Well, before we begin. Uh, Ben brought it to our attention that someone is gonna have to go out to the DHS company on Monday.
Pretty crazy.
Yeah.
I'd be happy to go there.
Yeah, I would go up.
I could gladly do that.
I could live, I've never been in the building, so.
I've got plans. I've got the plans of it so forth, so I could.
And you?
Call them.
Yeah.
I'll give her, I'll give.
Christine's office.
So Mark, you're gonna call DHS to let them know? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got, I fortunately have a copy of the floor plans that they'll appreciate seeing that we just got from the state.
Also going back to, uh, who is left out of the matrix evaluation? Like, were deputies left out of it or? Limited officials and union employees were not included in the matrix. But not deputies, deputies were. Yeah, cause they weren't at the time. They were unioned employees. Okay.
Are the assessors under the compensation thing, are they included in the matrix? Or the landfill that is not in the matrix, are they included in it?
There are only one clause all the way. Just let it, yep, thanks.
The landfills.
The separate, the, the, uh, entities that operate under separate boards and commissions have a choice by their board whether to join and assessors and the landfill chose not to join.
I'm just trying to help Mark get a more complete answer, right?
Yeah.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Tony Thorpe's again. This time is planning zoning against floodplain administrator.
All right, Mary Holt House has been doing a subdivision called Cedar Heights Third Edition. It is on the north end of Division Street where Raymond Drive intersects it. This has been reviewed by everybody who is qualified to review it. It has passed. We have all the attachments for the subdivision gathered, and you have all received that in a packet. Uh, it will be approved by resolution. Once the resolution is approved and assigned a number and I believe recorded, I'm not sure if Ben does that. Uh, it will go with all the original documents be sent back to Mary's attorney for recording. And Mary's here, if you have any questions for her.
Looks pretty straightforward. I don't see any issues. Do you, Tony?
I do not.
This one isn't a reading, but it is a resolution, so you would need to action.
I still move to approve the resolution second. Motion second to approve the resolution for the final plan in Cedar Heights Third Edition.
Uh. Hi.
Discussion? Is there any way that in the someday, it's two thousand twenty-five, that when we discuss these things, is there a way to show it so that people in the audience can see what we're talking about?
I'm not a computer guy. Don't know.
Well, we have a computer department, so this is a scanned digital image, correct?
Uh, actually, well, it could be. That, that one particularly isn't, but it could be, yeah.
So it could be. So I'm just saying, in the future, to be more transparent, it'd be great if the audience could see what we're talking about when we discuss these things and approve them. It would be wonderful. Anyway.
The camera, it wouldn't show on the recording, I think, would it? Cause it only shows that same screen.
Yeah.
In the corner.
Yeah, you ain't can see it if you're offline.
See it if you're on the, on the, uh, on the recording.
We can work with IT and ask them about that, yeah.
That is, that's.
They could, if they have IT have the scan, they could share the. Share it, read it and show it on the, for people that aren't here as well.
Cause I mean, it's published. If anybody's got a problem, send out to all the adjoining property owner. I mean, yeah, if there was an issue, it would have been brought to. By now.
So another.
Makes sense here. I'm just saying in the future, to be more transparent as a board.
Cause we follow all the. Stone he does, so I'm out, wherever he can be published.
That's what it's gonna mean though, is it's gonna die. Somebody in the IT department's gonna have to sit there for our entire, our entire meetings.
They are right now.
They are anyway. Um, it could be posted on the website, the scan of that previously, the meeting, which you want, probably.
previously, the meeting, which is more pertinent probably. All right.
Just something to think about for the future, nothing against you.
For a different day, we'll call back.
Aye.
Art.
Aye.
I also pass you hands.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Be careful of the door.
Five minutes. Consent agenda?
I have.
Pick up somebody.
Gonna get your work done.
Consent agenda, sorry. Other than, I might only have the minutes. Let me double check here. No, just a minute.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. The motion is second to approve the consent agenda. All votes in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This is unanimous. The committee reports?
And public health Wednesday. Something that we discussed budget a little later on.
I need to bring up on that, I guess.
You're gonna discuss budget on public health later, is that what you said?
Yep.
I have no committee report today.
Well, meeting.
It's a public hearing for the.
Conference board.
I will not be in attendance.
Six o'clock on Thursday.
Conference board is the assessors board.
Now will be here. And that's for the public, that's all on those boards is operates independently.
Six P M. Thursday night conference board public hearing.
Typically takes about five minutes.
Five minutes.
No community service building updates?
Not till, meet with them next Wednesday, twenty-six.
Ten thirty?
Yeah, building.
Ben, you handed off the, well, that's later in the agenda, isn't it?
What, we could do second run and third run stuff?
See a difference in, am I missing something?
Yeah, so the second run I did after last week's meeting. So I'll go through that first. So the changes from the first run to the second run is I increased the veterans grave care funding to five dollars per grave for FY twenty-six. And in, added the three hundred dollars to infrastructure spending. So I had the five hundred from the sale of the building with two fifty earmarked to go to pay off our new building, inspector building, and then the other two fifty to be determined later. Plus an additional three hundred thousand infrastructure money. And so, as you can see, I mean, those were mostly general funding. So from the first run to the second run, the only thing that really went down was the ending fund balance in the general fund. It actually went a little below twenty-five percent, which is, twenty-five percent is our normal kind of goal. But it was meant, it was an even basically with that three hundred thousand. But then on the third run, I did this one Friday after, or Thursday, I talked to Dan Marks, you're gonna take an action later on their office wages and reimbursements. But he informed me what their tentative plan was, and also that it would be similar for the jail cause I had only figured in a three percent raise for deputies, jailers, no, nothing else. And so the tentative agreement includes additional adjustment to the wage before the three percent of seventy-five cents. Includes a change in the shift differential pay and
And then uniforms by.
Uniforms and insurance that are required that they're getting reimbursed for. So that added some additional expenses. So for the third run, I increased the payroll lines and uniform lines for the sheriff's office to adjust for that. After doing that and running the third run, Dan called him back, said, well, maybe we could absorb some of that uniform amount. That's an actually very small amount, about nine thousand dollars in the total. So I told him I already run the third run, so I don't know that that little bit would make much difference. But so I added those additional expenses, but then decreased the infrastructure fund by a hundred thousand. So it's the five hundred thousand plus two hundred thousand in the infrastructure fund. And that got us back up over the, just over the twenty-five percent. Basically, we added about eighty thousand of additional expenses and then took a hundred thousand off of the infrastructure fund so that we still stayed in that twenty-five percent range, which is the target.
Did you mention a deputy pay increase?
Yeah, that's gonna be on the agenda later.
Yep.
So that's currently what's calculated in the third run.
Boys go around and requesting to put a sign on the building. They're gonna get some stuff put together and give us a.
I would say on the building or on the monument sign?
On the building.
I would object to that. I think the monument sign that's out there is adequate for identifying anyone that occupies the building.
And secondly, there's a sign ordinance for downtown.
Yeah.
Their entrances are on the back though.
No, it ain't, no, it's right. Right on the east side.
They use the same one.
Wow, it's right, just up and down, yeah.
Yeah, we've got that monument sign out there, all the non-existent tenants are, have been removed from it. Some stickers on the window, nobody even knew who that organization was, all that's been removed, so we just have the current up there, but I don't want toys around the bottom. They have a, they have a space inside there for their occupancy. There's nothing in there, DHS will have their have their, their sign up there also.
Does toys go around have a sign on their door?
Yeah.
There's one on the window.
Or window or door or whatever.
But as far as putting additional signs for any tenant on the building, I don't think that's necessary myself.
If they put one on that front, like you said, the one out front.
We've got that, we got that large monument sign right there that's planted. And that's more than adequate for, it's been adequate for every tenant that's been there historically, apparently, but added to the building.
It's a lot easier to see when you're coming down the street.
They wanna put something on their entrance door so people know which door to go to.
That falls, that falls within the city's ordinances on that.
What's on the food pantry? Signs.
I don't think, I can't recall anything out there of any, any consequence. I mean, we have to be on the canopy, but I don't, that awning out there, but I don't recall seeing it.
Yeah.
I would be in favor of putting something on the front window of the door.
Well, that's, and that's allowed in the city, in the city ordinances for signs, cause I worked on a committee on that to revamp those. And I don't see any exterior building sign as being a valid option. We've got a monument sign that takes care of, and monument signs are covered in the city ordinance.
They can, under city ordinance, they can also the sidewalks of that building are covered by our liability insurance. I believe they can put a sandwich board out that's four foot or less when they're open, says toys go around with an arrow.
Yeah, on the sidewalk sign, yeah.
Sidewalk right there, there's grass.
So much people know that that's the entrance.
And a temporary like that is acceptable in the city's eyes, but building signs.
As long as you have two million dollar liability insurance policy, you can do sandwich boards, four foot or less.
You should have liability policy.
Well, we, we cover the sidewalks with our insurance, so. And ours is more than that, so they could do a sandwich board. Or they could look into that.
That might be an idea, I could talk.
They just put it out when they're open.
Which would be better anyway. I will give them a call in a minute.
Thanks.
What we're thinking. Who is that that?
Paul Scott.
Paul Scott.
Ben, we have fifteen minutes open right now. Do you wanna go through this third run budget in more detail? Everybody in attendance, not mine.
I mean.
Have any questions on the budget?
I basically have everybody's all the regular budget requests that were submitted by departments are in there. Didn't make any. They all, they all were very conservative on their non-payroll expenses, so they were, we didn't have any to ask for increases in their total budget outside payroll. So we included all that in there. We did three percent for the elected officials and the matrix employees. The request by outside organizations, I passed that out with the first run last week, the current charge. You wanted to reference that, you can see what's in there for outside organizations. Otherwise, I don't know what else to really cover. I mean, some of the moved, I moved the one change from original submission was the recycling education person I moved out of conservation, put in the recycling department, actually has no impact on the bottom line of the budget, cause they're both funded from the general fund anyway, so I just, which department it's in. Have the, there's a truck, there's a new truck in the rural waste collection that's still in here, whether you need to buy it or not, but that's in here. That was one of the bigger ones that were questionable. It has two hundred thousand for the in department nineteen for the right-of-way maintenance line. We put two hundred thousand originally, we had talked about putting three hundred thousand in there, but when Michael made his just did his discussion about that, he outlined a budget based on two hundred thousand, so that's.
They have no equipment to buy, so.
So that is, that's what's in there for that department.
That comes out of our service fund anyway.
When are we gonna get serious about filling in an HR person?
Second, we have a question.
I just had one question about the area on aging. Were their funds completely cut out?
They've never funded it.
You have never.
It used to be funded and then we haven't for a few years.
That's gonna be coming up.
And it is on the agenda to discuss again.
It hasn't been funded for probably about ten years.
Going back to what you were asking, Steve?
Yep. What are we gonna do about, we got, we talked about that, kicked that around, kicked it down the road time and time again.
Kind of bits of salary that would be adding about
Hundred thousand plus.
At least a hundred thousand for that position.
And right now we're paying the consultants how much?
It's on an hourly basis based on projects. Last, this last, so far this fiscal year, we paid about four or five thousand for the work they did on redoing the play handbook. Now and then Andy will consult with them on other HR things, but I don't think it gets to be very much.
That's, that's taking care of emergency situations or things that are, that require third-party input. That doesn't take care of the day-to-day for employee needs, for benefits, onboarding, for record-keeping, for tracking of a lot of other things that are not being done.
Basically, we're a company of a hundred and forty-some people, and most companies with a hundred and forty employees have an HR director.
I mean, Lynn takes care of onboarding, we do the I-nines and ten documents for new vendors in our office, but that definitely could be something that a HR person works with. And from an insurance standpoint, she spends a lot of time helping people, they get their EOBs and don't understand how much they're supposed to pay or not supposed to pay. And so then she ends up going through that, which isn't necessarily something we need to do, but we're happy to do it, and it isn't always something we can figure out, so then we, she emails Brian to help.
I do think there's things that they would do that would be beneficial to the employees, especially, as we've talked about, every year, give them a breakdown of their compensation package, not just wages, but all of the benefits and what that totals of. So that they might see that what the real pay is compared to what their wage what their salary is.
What the county, what the county is committing to keep them employed.
Cause it's, what, thirty percent more at least, probably. Yeah, there's a large difference between take-home pay, you have to have. What's it getting hourly, it's compared to what we're putting in hourly again.
Even the hypers portion, that most people don't really even.
That's nine and a half percent what we pay.
Well, yeah.
Or nine point six or whatever.
And the deputies just went up significantly this year, so you look at the debt, the line, hypers, employer portion for hypers, contribution for hypers on deputies and the sheriff went up seventy percent or something, it was it was a significant amount.
Why was that?
The hypers rates are set at the state's level.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They were in the, they were down in the eight.
I mean, why would theirs be higher? Why would that?
They always have.
It just has.
They get paid more, they get more hypers percentage.
There's.
Because law enforcement.
Yeah.
The part of it is that their retirement benefits are based on a twenty-year career. Whereas the office employees' retirement benefits are based on a thirty-year career.
So it's not spread over the same.
So they have to have more put in. For some reason, it used to be traditionally that theirs was a little bit higher. It was down an eight point something last year, now it's up to over twelve dollars, or twelve percent.
Wow.
This year, in twenty-six.
What's our regular, hypers rate for?
Nine point.
Nine point four four. Nine point four four percent for regular employees. There are actually three categories. There's regular employees, which are most of ours. There's protective personnel, which are jailers fall into that category, and that one's a little higher. And then there's sheriffs and deputies, and that's the one that went up significantly. And part of the reason, the way they set their rates has to do with their returns on investments and looking at their, having actuaries that look at retirement times and making sure they're they have enough funds to cover retirement benefits.
Yeah, if you're gonna do it on twenty instead of thirty, you're gonna have to push a little harder to get it built up.
Steve, you calculated insurance costs. What are those roughly, the public might know?
A single is thirteen thousand some dollars, divided by two, it'd be six, six dollars and twenty-five.
Fourteen.
Family would be.
Here's the pretty cost.
Two thousand eighty dollars. Two thousand eighty hours divided in, whatever that number is.
Well, the employer, the insurance cost is our. But this currently, uh, pretty well.
Good, ten five, you work thirty five, how many hours, so that's.
Our. With, with.
Naturally required to provide insurance and thirty hour, thirty hour.
Yes.
But we have. A couple of hard line people that work. Less than thirty five and still get insured.
So we have, you know, what the employee pays for their contribution, a single employee. All of those are all twelve thousand seven hundred sixty eight on the current numbers. The, everybody else that takes, that has coverage for either children's spouse or family. Pays the difference, so that all of those insurance annual costs the county pays is seventeen thousand eight hundred ninety four dollars and forty cents. Then the next chart over, that's, beyond that, the employee cost. To the employer, or to the employee itself is listed in that middle column. Then if you look at the cost per hour on a twenty eighty. Full time, forty hour full time versus a thirty five hour full, uh, full time, those are the different numbers that come out. It's six dollars and a forty hour employee is six dollars and fourteen cents per hour. Or all the other that have the different insurance package, it's eight dollars and sixty cents an hour. That varies if you're a thirty five hour employee, it's seven dollars and two cents. And nine dollars and eighty five, eighty three cents, so you take.
Then the county is.
That's, that's the county cost per hour. So if you take their wage, you take that amount of either seven, six, seven, eight, or nine, whatever that they fall into in categories. You add nine point, nine point four four percent on top of that, and five point seven percent for FICA. You guys, that's, uh.
All that, so.
It all adds up to their cost.
Just make the public shit know that.
Then you have to factor in the. Other benefits of ten paid holidays and a minimum of two weeks paid vacation, so there's.
And sick leave.
Or, and sick leave, so there's a minimum of four weeks of available time off with pay. So if you, if you deducted that, now.
And then throw in the deductive.
It gets to where the cost per hour by, by what Dan was saying about their take home pay per hour. Versus the cost of the county per hour, there is a disparate, significant disparity.
I have to make copies of this after the meeting during my office hours, if you'd like me to.
Isn't that, I went back and looked at this again and put it that our side, side fund contribution. How much we're putting in to. Side fund to make it for the difference in the health insurance costs.
And one question is asked at. Wrap or braid around, but one they get asked quite frequently is if the employee cost for plus children is twelve dollars a year, and the play cost for plus spouse is. Seventeen hundred dollars a year, how come the plus family, which is both, is so much more? Well, that's because. You're counting the county's contribution twice, if you can't just add those two. Together, because then you've counted what the county put in twice. Because they're going to, you really, you need to look at the annual policy cost of eighteen thousand and twenty thousand, so. An extra. Uh, thirteen, so it's an extra five thousand to add children, and it's extra ten thousand to add family, so then to add, or to add spouse, so to add them both costs an extra. Fifteen. It makes more sense when you look at that column, not the cost to the employee, because it.
No.
That's not fair to look at that column, because adding those two together has counted the county's share twice. You can't.
So once you got, you know, I mean, a family policy costs the county twenty seven thousand seven hundred fifty eight dollars.
Cost, well, it costs the county the eighteen and the employee the ten.
The policy cost.
Yes.
That's minus all of the other deductions, the policy cost that we give to Walmart is twenty seven seven.
And employees covering.
About ten thousand.
Ten thousand.
Yeah, always covering about ten thousand, a little less. And then we've got then. The hundred dollar, two hundred deductible and a five hundred, one thousand, which the difference in that is covered by the side fund.
So the employee pays the, yeah, the five hundred to thousand is what the employee's out of pocket is, and then the rest is the side fund, because we buy a. Sixty five hundred dollar deductible plan from Walmart, so that difference is what we have to pay on the side. Thirteen thousand for families.
That was three years ago that we added employee plus children, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah, you bumped the amount, I don't remember if it's, that's about three years ago, yeah, you used to only pay the. The thirteen, twelve thousand seven hundred sixty eight, that that was all you paid, and then you started contributing some towards family plans.
And they were looking at combining maybe, checking with the insurance company to get a cheaper rate instead of doing that. The deductible on eighty twenty, the Stuwa flat. Pay the first five hundred or thousand.
Yeah.
It's just less paperwork if it gets cheaper and.
Yeah, and it actually would save a lot of questions.
Yeah, it'd be easier to read your thing. You meant your five hundred or your thousand and.
Yeah.
Brian didn't put back on the agenda for next week?
Um, well, I'll talk with him. I haven't, I just got the call, it's right away, right before I came here.
All right, ten fifteen, next item on the agenda, Mike Donahue, Northern Iowa Area Agency. Good morning. Yolanda.
Oh, yeah, good morning. Well, uh, as a point of introduction, my name is Mike Donahue, I'm the CEO for Northeast Iowa Area Agency on Aging. We've shortened up and called it NEI three eight. With me is Christie Wilson, she's our regional director up here in our, in our Decor office. We have three regional offices here at Decor in Buick and then Downwater as well. Um, Christie's been with the agency, serving Winnebago County for over twenty four years. Um, she's participated in. A past funding request, and I would, just to clarify, there was a comment said that we had not been funded in ten years, it's not true, we. We had funding as recent as fiscal twenty, our fiscal twenty two, which would end in June of twenty two, so we had. Pretty consistent funding, usually in the area of five hundred to seven hundred fifty dollars a month. But she has done that, obviously, has. She, she attended a lot of times before we created the position within the agency of a. Director of Grants and Development, that really is our grant writer and keeps track of all those different opportunities around there. Um, one of our board members from Winnebago County, Les Oskus, Oskelson couldn't be here today, a tragic death in their family, and he's got a funeral that he's attending too, so. We appreciate you giving us just a few minutes this morning. Um, our purpose in visiting today really is about sharing some additional, additional information concerning the agency's recent request. Um, for some support, uh, providing some clarifying information really about our operations in Winnebago County and across. Our eighteen counties, um, and to address a few statements that were made at the table during the discussion, I just want to make sure we clarify that. As I watched the meeting, it was apparent to me we had fallen short, uh, as an agency of sharing more of what we do for older persons in Winnebago County. And why they deserve your, your support. So NEI three eight covers eighteen counties in Northeast Iowa. We run from. Almeti County all the way down to Powashie County, we run from Howard County all the way down to Jackson County, a fairly large. Geographical area. And, you know, we, I, I know that there was a comment made about we didn't attend, uh, meetings anymore. Um, not an excuse, but realize, realize that twelve, in twelve over eighteen counties, um, the supervisors meet on Mondays. And that, given that's our large geographical area, um, and you're all, you're all doing what you're doing today, right? You're all building your budgets and reviewing requests, so all that stuff gets squeezed into a pretty narrow, uh, window. Uh, we do appreciate the volun, the opportunity to join virtually as we did this year back in, in January. But just hope you understand that that would be a pretty logistical challenge, uh, for our Director of Grants and Development to be in person and all those all at the same time. That being said, if an in-person presence is a requirement for funding from Winnebago County, know that we will plan to have, uh, representation here. To answer any questions that you have. As was mentioned during our. Presentation on January thirteenth, our services in Winnebago County this past year served over three hundred residents. Um, providing nutrition, family care, giver support, um, information and assistance through our lifelong links. Call center, supervisor Kelsey, that was, that was one of the, the decals on the window that when I got here. Uh, I kind of looked at that and said, who knows what that is, but it is a statewide call center for all the area agencies on aging. NEI three eight hosts that, and so we have geocoding that routes other calls across the state, but we handle. Over fifty percent of the calls that are made across, from this in-state and out-of-state, um, for people that are looking for help and some services. Those. Those home and community-based services that we tried to layer in total over a hundred and fifty seven thousand. If you looked at over the past six years, uh, we have touched over fifteen hundred, uh, consumers in Winnebago County with services that. Are close to approximately nine hundred thousand dollars in those six years, and. As you hear from everybody, the demand just continues to grow. It's not going down. Um, in addition to those residents that we served this past year, there are another thirty five that are either in Winnebago County. That are in, on a waitlist, or they, we were not able to serve them because of, uh, lack of funding. And if you put those and. Try to iterate some type of cost that, not knowing what services those thirty five will need, that's probably a gap for us anywhere between sixty and a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Depending upon the services they, they needed. There was a comment made here that, while I already support. NEI three eight because I pay my federal taxes, our budget is six point three million dollars. Forty four percent of that is federal funding, thirty eight percent of that is state funding. Um, nine percent is consisting of local contributions, so, uh, that could, and those are local governmental entities. Could be counties, could be municipalities, townships, we even have libraries that are, that are organized in that way. And for, but the last four percent is from consumers. So our regulations with the Older Americans Act say that people who we serve, we have to give them an opportunity to contribute. If they want to, great, we don't track it. If we get money from somebody for, let's say, caregiver support. We put it right back into the caregiver support program. We don't know who gave it, we know geographically where the contributions come, but that's, that's as much as we keep track of. Um, last year, our federal funding fell eight and a half percent. Our state funding. Stayed pretty, pretty similar, pretty level, and I share that only because. Triple As are required by administrative rules at both the state and the federal level. To seek local contributions in order to access the state or federal fund. So it's not like just all magically comes in. We've got to demonstrate to them that we are out there doing that. I'm sure there's a lot of nonprofits you guys support that are similar, they, they, they're supported by federal grants. Our SVP here in, in Winnebago County is a great partner of ours when it comes to, uh, volunteers. I know there was a comment made that Meals on Wheels is a federal program. Well, kind of like the term Kleenex, Meals on Wheels has become synonymous almost with anybody that delivers meals. And it's important to understand that there are two things. Meals on Wheels is an independent fundraising organization. What they try to do is they raise money from donors, they help communities coordinate volunteers, and then they advocate, advocate to the federal government for funding to support their services. There are six triple As in the state of Iowa. Only two of them are members of Meals on Wheels, but we are members, we are dues paying members. We get no federal funding, we get no funding whatsoever from Meals on Wheels. I mean, they're, they're kind of a brand that they can go out, they can get in communities, they can raise money, and then they can coordinate the delivery of services as they want, and that's, that, that's the federal funding they do. The federal funding that we receive is a direct allocation from the Administration for Community Living, which is a part of HHS. Um, and it's governed by the Older Americans Act. Lastly, and then I'm going to turn it over to Christie for a couple of comments, um, there was a comment made at the. Table in support of denying the request that the county had offered NEI three a building. It should be noted, the county purchased this spectrum building, a building in which NEI three had been a tenant for over seven years. The county informed us, our space that we occupied, they wanted, because they wanted it for another county agency or related a, agency to move in. And that we could be relocated in another part of the building. The offer, while appreciated, did not fit our needs, as the lease term offered was shorter in length, it was a year. As a nonprofit, we, we go from year to year on funding, it's hard to do that. A less desirable layout, half the square footage of our previous office space, and an all-in cost that would result in a higher premise cost for the agency. This was a business decision on behalf of the agency. To manage premise costs while also providing our staff with a necessary space to do our work. Like all nonprofits you support, you know, we work hard to be efficient, uh, and make sure that dollars remain in our programs. And try to minimize our operating costs such as premise costs. And I'll quickly turn it over to Christie, because I know she's, she's hands on. On the front lines of what we do in Winnebago County and to probably speak better to what, what our, what our consumers get in return.
Thanks, Mike. Just, I'll just take a minute to be courteous of the agenda and time. Um, but just two thoughts that I have that I want to build on what Mike has shared. One, here in Winnebago County, we're really the only agency that does the work that we do. Um, we've been serving as a nonprofit organization for more than fifty years in county. We visit older adults in their homes to help them navigate through some very complex and challenging situations. We connect and refer them to resources they're unaware of, explore all programs and benefits they may be eligible for. Provide application assistance, fund direct in-home support such as homemakers, personal care, respite, and meals. And we facilitate caregiver support groups and help prevent and protect them from fraud and abuse. Sometimes we're really the only advocate that they have, and our advocacy work that we provide is not any cost to our consumers. Secondly, the dollars we receive are also shared through partnerships throughout the county. For example. We contract with Earl Transit using our funds to provide transportation services for people that don't have transportation means. Uh, we have purchase of service agreements with home care providers such as Loving Touch, located here in Decorah. An in-home health provider that has been here for many decades. Um, and as Mike mentioned, we work closely with RSVP as a station utilizing their volunteers to deliver meals. We also collaborate with WinMed, uh, Winnebago County Public Health and Gunderson. Um, they often seek our advice and refer patients upon discharge to ensure proper follow-up. And care for their well-being. Um, there's approximately forty seven hundred people in Winnebago County that are sixty or older. And we want all of them, including their family and caregivers, to know NEI three is committed to help maintain their independence. We're just here to speak on behalf of all older individuals in Winnebago County and message that they do deserve your support.
Thanks, Christie. Just in closing, I want to thank you all for your time. I know you've got busy, busy budget times and the agenda's often. Full, um, I'm hoping that this additional information regarding what we do every day in Winnebago County. And the clarifications around our operation will provide the holders with an opportunity to reconsider the request of forty seven hundred dollars. Just note, regardless, uh, NEI three eight will start today and continue tomorrow, um, to provide the vol, the services to the most vulnerable and at risk older persons in Winnebago County. With really critical and life-changing services that allow them to live. Uh, where they decide, where they desire and at their choice, and to do that and to do so with dignity, so.
Do, I think you have counties. Fun.
We have eighteen counties, we receive funding from about fourteen of them, the other, there's two other ones, uh, that we actually partner with. The city, for example, Blackhawk County, we partner with the city, uh, and water, and Blackhawk County. Uh, we do some community development block grant funds down there around nutrition and home modifications. Um, so those, you know, that their contribution kind of comes through that partnership.
Okay.
Yeah.
Dollar monstered out by the numbskull population in the counties?
No, well, while we've. No, well, while we've, we, as I think as Lisa.
Yeah, you stated forty-seven hundred in request and it was forty-seven hundred.
Oh, no, no. Um, you may recall from, maybe recall from Lisa's presentation. Our request to all the counties, we try to be very consistent. We look at. The dollar amount of services that were provided in that county and we ask for three percent of that.
Only three percent of the services provided within.
This past fiscal year. Thank you.
The address to discussion on Monday?
It's later during budget discussion. We have a fourth run. Make changes. We should probably discuss anyway after you take action on the sheriff's.
All right, next up, Michael Cuny, our county engineer with the DOT five-year plan.
That's the. Five-year plan out through email. TPMS version of. Budget, so.
I want to thank Tiger Parker Monitor.
Uh, so, since last meeting. Basically, the W fourteen, there's been no news on that one. Riverway Flat Car Bridge. We're going to be visiting a site that's, nothing been done on that, so the vision's that. Is the same thing, unit negotiations is the same as last week. Ridgeway Shopping Preca, the boiler installation is still left, uh, called this morning to coordinate. Maintenance activities for twenty twenty-five has, is being coordinated. I've spent a lot of time doing that. I'm looking at some. Certain weeks of the summer. Are going to be short in, in terms of. Crew, uh, based off of. Previous availability, so we will be. Trying to coordinate, uh, with the crew and, and especially May and early June. To say, hey, please put your, um, vacations in, in later in the year. So that way we can go all the pre-work for. The B thirty-two, Arasil and, and. Have Nessie Valley put in there and, and a whole bunch of stuff going on early in the summer season. So we'll be talking about that at the safety meeting on March twelfth. Encourage a couple of you to come, or if more than two of you would like to come, we'll make an open meeting. Kind of like we've done in the past. What's that?
March twelve?
March twelve, and I don't have a time for you, I just. Okay, uh, so. That's what we'll be doing, trying, trying to coordinate our, our crews to be doing that. And then, uh, had a couple of meetings this week with the, with all of you. On a, on long-term stacking strategy, especially now that, uh, Superintendent has, has. Yes, he's going to be leaving. The, uh, I received numerous utility permits last week, summer, summer projects. We've sent out metal, uh, for a metal pipe needs. Last week, uh, we posted our superintendent. Position. The Nessie Valley Campground Construction Plan, Plans preliminarily worked out for May of twenty twenty-five. We're looking, the tiny secondary roads are roughly looking at two hundred thousand dollars worth of. Work to be provided. This is a unique scenario where they can perhaps pay us to do the work. Worked with Ben and maybe work for Hacker Nelson to make sure of that.
Only because it's being funded through a grant that's coming through their capital improvements. Normally, the conservation couldn't. Hire the road department using general fund money because we already transferred the max that's allowed from the general fund. We got in trouble with that one time because the. Conservation wanted to buy a truck that the. Road Department was straight going to trade in. But they wrote a check to, and then we got Hacker Nelson and said, we can't do that. We had to. Basically reduce the amount we transferred from the general funds to make up for that. So then the road department actually gave them the truck in the end, by the end of it.
That was before my time.
And so, so we. Now, if they want to do that, they have to work a deal out with the dealer where they actually do trade it in and then.
Write the check.
And then the conservation can buy the truck from the dealer, so then it's all okay.
That was actually before any of us said.
Yeah, that was before any of, any of you, but so. That's why when he, when they asked about this grant money and how we, if that could be used to pay them. I got Hacker Nelson involved at the beginning so that we didn't do anything we weren't supposed to. And since it is a grant fund and they're holding the grant money in their capital improvements fund, it's okay for them to pay. Now, it might not be that they are going to pay the whole two hundred thousand, but whatever portion that the grant is funding, they can.
Yeah, that's going to be. And then I know which rates to be charged and everything else, so that'll be.
And, and there was part of the application for the grant back when they first applied for the grant. That the county was going to be helping to fund the building of the road as part of our in-kind. Contribution to get the grant, so. It might be, say it's a hundred thousand of it gets, gets paid back, then the other hundred thousand is our match or whatever it is. I don't know.
Bridge one twenty-six. Staff have been working diligently on that, that is, we are progressing to. That's a north of Highlandville. It's, uh, it's a federally funded bridge and, uh. We're, we're hoping that the, the box structure, uh, goes through. We kind of try and, if, if it does, we'll probably buy in stream bed credits like we did on, on. Two O A D, uh, we're trying to. First, a lot, get us in a position to allow that first, so. Otherwise, we're talking instead of a four hundred. Instead of a four hundred thousand dollar bridge, we're talking about a. Eight hundred, nine hundred, eight dollar bridge, so. Yeah, that's where we're at with the. And then trucks over the weekend, uh, were Saturday and Sunday, and then Blades removed the snow on Sunday.
Guys did a nice job. Blain, they didn't scrape from the gravel. I mean, they did a really good new job.
Good.
Because that's gravel, it's just powder dry.
Yeah. The ones I drove, they did an excellent job. Good, good. I plan on going out shortly after and, and looking at a couple of things, so.
If you guys see a little, little snow for a little melt.
Sure.
And ram the rock on the road.
Then I guess the five-year program, is there any? Any concerns that you saw on that?
Two-year, twenty thirty, there's no.
I don't have anything lined up for twenty thirty, but I mean, twenty twenty-nine, I have. A, a hope that middle calmer goes, but that's. That the price tag on that's not going to, going to make that not happen, so. Five and a half, yeah, and that's twenty twenty, you know, five dollars, not twenty twenty-nine dollars, so.
Going to be broke up into two.
Well, that would be, that would be the desire if we were going to do it.
But north that first and then the south that.
Well, you kind of want to line the pavements and things like that, so.
When we did the pole line road, we had to do it in two sections because there was no way.
Yeah.
From Decorah to Cresco, we did about half of it first because there was no way we could do it all.
This, this project would, has a natural dividing line where we would do, and I'm going to say rough numbers. But it's going to be like four-fifths of the project. You know, it's about four million dollars on one and then another billion and a half on another section. But that's the nice dividing line from a, keep all of your paving sections, uh, you know, uniformed. Not have as many joints in your. Cross-sections, so. That's, again, be nice to get it all done at once, save on the mobilization, save on us, but. We'll just, we'll just see how our budget goes, uh, as we move on and see if we can. I mean, there's, there's a lot of. A lot of things that can change over the next three or four years. On that, and, and the other thing that might change is. The need to do somewhere else, to be quite frank. You know, W fourteen north of Ridgeway is perhaps.
Don't you drive.
Yeah, I.
Turn it into gravel.
I, that's. It makes me cry, that's what I'll say to that.
It's especially bad because that road isn't that old compared to.
No, it's only twenty, not even twenty or twenty years old or that. Yeah, twenty-two. I'm not sure what to do on that, but it comes up because the race, the building grant now, um. We, we basically have. Done the whole W fourteen. Uh, if, if we end up getting those funds from that building grant.
Because the reason why, I was informed why a lot of them spots for them real bad dips are. When they paved this whole way, they had to dig them spots out, fill them full of rocks, so there's no.
That's why.
It's two different materials.
Yeah, it's two different cross stations. So you have differential setup. Being able to try and do that way in middle calmer. So like, that's the exact scenario kind of with middle calmer, why. Yes, across, across the whole, like, as best you can. So now I'm going, now it's not exactly clear what we need to do. Because it's already different. So.
I mean, six plus foot culvert, you got the worst it's going to be because that's where the problems arise at.
That is, that is the discussions we've had, so. Any questions for me so far? I, I have sent out the, the budget, but the. I did, what, I didn't.
I listed it on here for discussion at some point. Um, I can't remember now because they've changed that. Due date, used to be March fifteenth and then not, then they moved it to April some point. But at some point before we approve the full budget for the county, the DOT budget. Your DOT budget has to be signed.
Okay, so. And, and that, that has to be signed by.
Yes, has to be approved by the.
I will work with Nikki as soon as I get done on my tour to get that done. I was working on that.
And I, I'm sure you'd have time. I think it's sometime in April. They may have even. Again, I apologize for not knowing the exact timeline, but I think they changed it even and there was some proposal to make it like May fifteenth. But then that gets too late for DOT reviews, so they were going to move it back to sometime in April just to.
I think it's tax day.
I think that might be right, April fifteenth. So you have time to have it done, just we have to. Their final public hearing on the county budget won't be until. About last Monday of April will be the. Now it'd be too late to do yours, we need to do yours before that.
I, if you don't, I, I will work with Nikki as soon as we get done here. A- actually, she might be up for President's Day because she's staying, so.
Yeah.
Might have to be tomorrow. It was, it's, it was literally an error that I ran into twice, and I'm sure it's. He tried to. I'm sure it's on my end.
I just won't put it on the agenda till you tell me that you're ready to present.
Yeah, I mean, you do have, you do have a five-year plan like I promised, and then, um, the. All I'm going to do is take the numbers that I sent you in January and trans, and transport them into the TPMS for the twenty twenty-five. And twenty twenty-six budgets for the state, so. Like I said, like I said last week, I'm pretty much done on all the stuff. I just need to file the state and then shoot the paperwork. I set it Tuesday, I think, and I already did, so I think I set it up Tuesday, last week. Right now, that it's, um, and then we're looking at twenty twenty-six, early twenty twenty-six as the. Correct, but well, that'll be the maintenance done, but they will, there was no current. Uh, there's no capital improvements that are going to be done. It's just going to be trying to smooth out the road. And then, and then, um. Yes, yes, well, I drove it two weeks ago, I think, and I was as. Any of the complaints that it has, was surprising. It was nicer than I was expecting. Well, they, and they put, they put some cold mix in, so, so they did put some cold mix in and we're going to try to make sure it's nice and smooth. The, the cold in place operation to happen in twenty twenty-six. So. Is that, that helps that process as well. It's beneficial multiple ways. They've called in, so I, I, I know that. It's going to be a nice road like that new fourteen when it's done.
That first section of that road from the highway to just past the landfill. Has been talked about in Board Supervisors meeting since I started this audit in two thousand nine. Because that end of the road is, that's one of the only ones we don't, uh, embargo in the. Spring because people have to get to the landfill, and so that first part of that road has been crap for a long time.
In a perfect world.
Yes, that is a perfect world.
There is a letter from Dave Omling, did you get this letter, that he wants entered into the public record.
All right, several have discussed today.
He sent it to the board, so it's public record.
Okay, I don't, I don't remember seeing this and I don't know Dave. Okay. But I mean, the fact of the matter is, is. It's as bumpy as middle calmer, it's not getting bumpier, things aren't opening up and it's, it's one of those. Oh, yeah, it's a problem, but it's, things become bigger problems as, as time goes on. W, W forty-two is a perfect example. I mean, it's just. But the concrete roads are, are nice that way and it's, and when they get bad, they oftentimes. Will continue to, to get worse.
Do you want to have anything else from Mike?
We did, I did talk with, uh, Mike, we, we sent Mike a post about closing this board here, which we'll talk later about. There was, the engineers' office had no objections or saw no objections.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda, Andy Vandermaat, the attorney.
Next up on the agenda, Andy Vandermaat, the attorney.
Good morning.
Morning, Andy.
Do you have anything for us this morning?
Um, I do not have anything for the board, but Dan, if you get a chance this afternoon, if you give me a call. Um, we need to discuss the, um. The filing this past week.
Yeah, not a problem.
You guys have anything for me?
Yeah, Andy, uh, we've checked around, and do you see any reason why if we eliminated the stairs? The old stairs that go down to the south from between the annex and the old jail? If we eliminate those and fill in that area, we have a, a situation, that's, those stairs are. In need of significant repair or abandoning, since we have the new stairs that we just put in. Over towards your office and towards the library side of the courthouse. So is there anything, any reason why you think we would have to maintain those stairs as a point of ingress egress? Or can we just eliminate them, since that doesn't seem to be, Engineers' Office sees no problem, I don't see any site requirements. We've got access from the other three sides of the property.
Um, off the top of my head, I can't think of a reason that you could not do that, I mean, I think. Obviously, those went in back when the jail was active and the boiling system and everything for the. Jail was, uh. Needed access through that, but I, I can't think of a reason. Why you'd have to keep them at this point.
It's convenient for a few employees, but it's something that is probably best if we eliminate.
Sure.
Just shuffle. Just ice on there, never gets more sun, liability is just.
Yeah, we don't need, we don't need the liability.
Anyone have anything else, Randy? Thank you, Andy, and I'll get ahold of you.
Thanks, talk to you later.
Next on the agenda, we have miscellaneous items, which is HHS records release authorization.
Um, so this came out as a email from ISAC, um, basically, ISAC handle the, uh. Uh, the commu- uh, Community Social Services Network, the CSN, um, they do the work for counties that. Uh, this, this, uh, database that keeps track of mental health information for through. Uh, for the HHS, basically, the HHS is trying to collect, uh. Uh, information, and since it is technically the county's information that ISAC is storing for us. Uh, we have to give permission for them to access the, to do the research, it isn't the. Specifics of care or names of patients, but it has to do with getting counts of how many. People are getting different types of services, so they can coordinate the, um, some replacement programs and fees and those kinds of things, so. So they're asking that each county sign this records release, I had Andy review it, um. He didn't see anything wrong with it, and I just took the template form that. ISAC provided and filled in our information, county name and. Dan's name and so on. I would recommend signing this and sending it in, and they can coordinate the release of information.
I motion to release the records.
Second.
We have a motion as second for the records released to HHS. Any further discussion? None, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Both, same sign.
Aye.
Your posts. Right, outside stair maintenance and closing.
I think we're, we've discussed that enough that I move that we proceed with closing that. Uh, new public access installer wall, and then backfill it up to the level of the upper section, we have a. A bid to do that, along with some other services we're gonna do at the same time. With the, we have some concrete sidewalk around the courthouse that has some trip hazard issues to it, and we're gonna replace some sections of that. So in coordination with that, we'll have this other project through Alkerson's budget. That should be, I, I think it's just a smart move.
Will it be covered with grass eventually?
It'll eventually be lawn.
Lawn, okay.
We do have a little bit of sidewalk to replace, because we still have that stairway that we have to maintain access to.
And as long as we're doing that, after that issue last week, if we're doing, we're going on here, maybe put, uh, the. Six inch or.
Post.
Post in.
There are a car driving around the courthouse.
I didn't hear about this.
It was on, they sent you a copy.
Again, someone got confused, instead of leaving the parking lot onto the street, they left the parking lot and started driving through the yard.
Caught him on the far corner over there.
It was not me, for the record.
There was Minnesota plate, so it was someone who.
We're looking out the window and caught him, and they.
Oh, my.
But as long as they're doing, I mean, to put whatever it would. Long here to keep, defer that from happening.
Well, if we, we could add some, a couple of bowards along there, that's what you're suggesting, but we also had that. Recommendation that we had a couple of bowards on the corner of this corner here, because we have some. Situation where somebody may mistake the exit and ram into the corner of this building. So, and we could.
Somebody if we're doing that.
Have John coordinate all that.
It is, you can put those posts that you can remove, if you ever needed to get for maintenance access.
It brings up a good point, we do have occasional necessary access to the second, no, to the second. Storage area up there, so a removable post to allow for, something to back into there would be perhaps like.
What about it? Things were on the, like, you could still drive up to the jail, so they weren't at the end of the parking lot, instead they're on the north side, the.
On the side, on the sidewalk itself.
Yeah, they're, they're, so that the sidewalk comes through, but then at the edge of the grass, and they can still get to the old jail without.
That's not a bad, we can simply close off and eliminate that access point, because there's nothing.
Yeah, like at the edge where the grass meets the sidewalk going. Yeah, maybe that would be a good place to put it, so that.
Still have access to the second floor.
Floor, yeah, I think that would be wise.
Whatever we do, I think it should be visually attractive.
Just a ballard right there next to the sidewalk would be adequate, and then we don't have a, that would stop the access issue. And then, that would be more attractive than having ballards all the way across.
Yeah, plus there's times when you're loading or unloading, whether it's my election trailer or something. From the, the sheriff has all those records in the jail and so on, that having obstructions there might be in the way, but.
We have a lot of storage doing that.
Yeah.
So a ballard is a big cement barrier.
No, that's. Like you see in front of Quich.
Yeah, yeah.
Just a couple of those at the edge of the sidewalk, where the grass there would keep people from going through there.
Yeah, one on, and one on the corner here, or whatever blocks the front.
Is the estimate for that broken down specifically by each of the pieces?
Yeah, there's. Estimate for the other sidewalk removal and replacement around the courthouse itself, and then we'll have bowards to it. Probably two right here and one or two over there.
The estimate includes, that they'll fill.
Yeah, they, they backfill it, I don't know, I think John probably ended up having to see it, get your ass growing. And then there was, Homeland Security wanted a baller added over, because it could have just as easily driven right past the front, the north.
They used to have metal railing there that kind of obstructed people, but that. That got taken down, because it was in disrepair, and we didn't know if we needed it, remember there used to be a metal railing across then? And someone probably could drive right up that area.
Since we've dragged down sidewalks up the coast of college, as Mark and I found out, we certainly don't want to.
Well, I think we should have owned back here.
Mind me wise, that because of that Homeland Security review, that maybe we consider finding a way to put something to block that in, and we're. Then we're done. So I'll pursue that.
So do you need to make a motion or just, just agree?
I think, uh, maybe a motion, the, the motion to close the stair, all the rest of that is regular.
Close that opening for the stairs.
But is there a reason to get a second bid on that?
We've already, we've got, John's got, it's not, it's a small amount, it's like ten thousand.
Well, but.
And that's, that's how big concrete, and they're already doing this piece up here, so I think we, one mobilization and get it done. That's, that's a very reasonable, that was more reasonable than I thought it would be.
I would agree with you.
Yeah, yeah.
The, uh, when they replaced the. Bump out on the street corner down here, um, where they redid the Broadway intersection.
Yeah.
There's like a little section of grass out there, I know that, like, over at the church, they put in a decorative concrete in that area. Just because that was a pain, because people would drive through it, but anyway, I know that John, that, maybe that might be something he must consider.
He's already talked to them about it.
Okay, okay, I was gonna say, because it's kind of weird to have this one little, little like half moon of grass down there.
Yeah, because you remember, recall that that was because of what, um, a lion had done with the guy wire, it created that. So John's also pursuing to see if a lion will pay for that.
Oh, okay.
I'm not visualizing exactly, so use the stairs all the time, but when they're filled in and covered, if not grass, then maybe some type of. Decorative concrete or whatever, but a pad for an outdoor dining area for our employees for breaks.
This, I think, will be grass up here, I'm talking about that.
No, I'm just, but I am talking about that, I'm just wondering if it would create a nice spot for picnic table or seating.
We usually have one sitting out here.
Room right here.
An idea.
Well, I'm, I would, just as, my thought is if we did extend out over there in that area, then we need to have. Put some railing or something up there, because we're approaching that, that outside wall, whereas, and that's gonna be a. Let's keep.
Keep them away from.
Prapping out of there, we do have this area around the chimney and all, it's fenced in right here, that was, it's a, a place for the table.
The other thing to consider is putting a new con- new concrete will certainly stand out. As compared to the old concrete they're matching up to there, it's gonna be stained or colored or.
It'll be ill-aged over time, it's gonna be different, but you've got a different pattern on this, on this building itself and a different pattern on the wall. So it'll be more like just a panel, but. Staining it is not gonna stay, it may look good to begin with on the stain, but it won't, but it won't stay the same over time. Because the other's gonna change, and that'll never cost, that'll change.
So, you made a motion?
Yes.
I second it. Motion in second to close the outside stair. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion goes unanimously. Next, we set a public hearing for the FY twenty six proposed tax levies.
Yep, so we have to set this public hearing, um. You can still make changes, like you have between the second, uh, third runs. This has to do with the levies themselves, we set the public hearing on that, and then that's what gets added to the. Mailing that goes out to all taxpayers, um, I'm proposing that that be set for March thirty first at nine thirty.
I'd make the motion to, for the public hearing on, on March thirty first.
Second.
The motion in second to set the public hearing for the FY twenty six proposed tax levies, March thirty first at nine thirty.
Aye.
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 And what I have paired is the, using the max for. General, basic and rural, and then using the same as last year for the supplement. So you could still make some small changes in there, like when you want, you want to discuss the request by any I three A or something. You could make some changes within that levy, and you could actually lower the levy later, but you couldn't raise it, but you can't raise two of them.
Next up, Sheriff's Office FY twenty six wages and reimbursements. Me and Steve, a little everything that's been going on, we. He had talked to us Wednesday, it's fun, no too good meet. Probably should have brought to the board for whatever, but everything that's been going on, we, fellows that are gonna take care of, along with the budgets going through, so we met with them. When it actually comes down to be everything that's in there, it's right at or less than what a. Years of service bump would be in the matrix system, on the total dollar amount, yeah.
Of the comps look.
We're still, it's only gonna bump us up, like, the seventy five cent raise will bump us up two, two points.
So compared to other counties our size.
But we did, we put more into the uniform and stuff, which then we don't have to pay FICA and hypers on that. So it's a little better to put more in there and give them that, and then they had a five thousand dollar liability insur- I mean. Five hundred dollar per employee liability insurance, they had to take out here too, say. So that was come out of their own wages, and so it's, it was easier to put extra into that uniform and vest. And all the extras that they gotta buy themselves, that we reimburse rather than pay them, and then they, you know, do back, so. Right now, with Ben's, that is twelve and a half there, and FICA is like four and a half, so it's saving seventeen percent right there, just funny. So we gave them a forty cent, uh, shift differential, it was sixty. The, like, the police department's dollar seven, D maybe, somewheres in there. So we just bumped them up to a dollar, gave them a forty cent. Shift differential, which, you know, we talk a lot of factories, they're all at a dollar, dollar fifty for shift differential, so I didn't think that was.
What shift does that, the evening shift, what are the hours of that?
I don't know, it just shift differential.
It's four, it's either four or six in that evening, it starts and it goes until. Yeah.
Yeah, so then, I compromised at a seventy five cent an hour pay increase, which only bumps them up from. We were like thirteen out of seventeen scenarios he gave us, we were at down at thirteen, this will bump us up to like eleven. I mean, yeah, at least we, yeah, get there.
Thirteen out of seventeen of what?
Colonies, comps, similar pop- similar population comps, whatever, yeah.
We had some smaller counties that were.
More than.
Thirteen thousand population that were higher than we, significantly higher than we were. That's, we're catching up a little bit.
It bumped us from thirty eight sixty one to thirty nine, thirty four.
We're less empowered, and now this is comparing with last year's wages. On new wages, and we were still below, we're below Howard County, and we were below.
Yeah, there's, yeah.
Also.
But I mean, it just, it's gonna bump us up a couple, but then by putting more into the uniform and that stuff. That kind of offsets that a little bit, but then we don't gotta pay, like I said, you don't have to pay FICA and FICA or whatever. FICA and hypers on that, so it's saving us, you know, twenty percent on, you know, it saves us five, six hundred bucks per employee there, easy.
And he, and Dan's finding in his budget that.
He was.
He, he, he offered to find some of it, I had already added. Uh, some of it yet, so, I mean.
So in future, just for process procedure, it would be nice to have this come to the board first and then add it to the.
I know, but what, Loua, with everything going on, we thought we better get it done now, because if we drag it out another week, then it gets dragged out further, so. And I thought, after I figured it all out, the comp, it was right at or less than what. People are getting in the matrix for a one year bump, so.
Another thing that.
And the years of service bump.
Another thing brought up was, uh, when they. Uh, pulled themselves out of the union, they lost legal protection that they had through the union. Uh, it would be outside, if there was an, say there is an officer involved shooting, uh, then they have to have their own insurance.
That's where the insurance thing comes from, so.
Provide for protection for the officers. And so when they pulled out of that, of course, then they're sitting with, with no, with no coverage as individuals. And so what they have done themselves is created their own fraternal order, arranged for a group policy, and each of them pays individually five hundred dollars a year themselves for that protection.
For coverage.
And for coverage. And another thing, so we were, and that also saved that we don't have to go through the legal process with the attorneys and so forth for union negotiation again, for all the costs of that, since they in good faith stepped out of it to make it just, they're trusting.
I thought in good faith, here we are, we can, we can work with them, they're, they strap a gun on every day to go do what.
No, not questioning that. Why couldn't, uh, bear with me because I wasn't in that meeting, so there's a lot of questions. Why couldn't they be covered under the county's insurance for that type of thing?
Yes, it's, it's a personal, it's cover their personal liability too.
I mean, they are covered under county for liability.
But if they come after him personally.
If they come after him personally.
Also with hours you mean?
No, no, even on hours.
And they're not covered?
Say if some, some incident happened or something, somebody could come after him, say, you were, you were negligent on what, what happened in the deal, just say for instance, so they could come after them personally.
But that's true of any of our employees. Like if there was a safety accident at one of, like recycling, for instance, the recycling supervisor could be criminally charged if he was negligent in safety rules. And that's covered by ICAP, correct?
We have, we have liability.
Well.
We have liability insurance for them doing their job. They, they wish to have additional insurance to cover them more than what the county covers them. So that's what they're buying.
They can come after them.
Anyone could be, buy, I buy more insurance for myself or.
For household or property or whatever.
Well, we all have our own for our houses, but I'm just surprised that
Yeah, but this is.
they need extra. And they're willing to pay for it.
So this falls, this is pretty far.
This falls, we are paying for, but it falls under their work.
That, that was part of the deal. We picked up that side fund.
Yeah, it, it falls under their work.
And they can pay it out in a uniform.
Yeah.
That they receive.
But the county's gonna pay this extra five hundred liability?
Yes, yeah, we are.
Indirectly.
Indirectly, because it's their insurance. I mean, it's part of their job, yeah.
I understand the, the job is dangerous, but what, I'm just trying to get to the bottom question.
The county is not paying this insurance. The county is paying them, giving them money. And if they wanna use it to buy insurance, that's up to them.
It's their stipend.
Or uniforms.
It's their stipend.
Whatever they wanna use.
But it's still not, I'm still not clear on my question. I'm not against them getting any of this stuff. I'm surprised that our county insurance wouldn't cover them in that situation because it covers other employees if we're gone after individually.
That would probably be a good question for Andy.
Well, it'd be a good question for all of us to ask Andy, if somebody comes after us as supervisors, are we covered?
Point for everybody to bring up to.
Yeah.
I think this relates to a na, within law enforcement, but I think this is a national thing that is hitting everybody. That's why you could have.
Well. Well.
Another writer, another policy.
I move to approve our, our.
Oh, it's second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Sheriff's Office FY twenty-six wages and reimbursements. Is there any further discussion?
If someone from law enforcement is online that can answer that question more succinctly, would they please speak up from the law enforcement center?
And I can ask.
Yeah, yeah, we can, yeah, yeah.
All right.
Because we all need to know.
I think it'd be good. Basically, that uniform allowance, the way that works is it's just extra money that they get. They are responsible then for keeping, they keep receipts that they bought uniforms on insurance, then they turn it into their tax preparer because it's still money we're giving them. Then we're going to report that we gave them this money and whether it's counts as their income for their taxes, it's between them and their tax preparer. So, so if they want to.
I mean, they could be paying taxes on.
Yeah, they could. If they take the money and use it to do something other than uniform or insurance, then they're paying taxes on that as additional pay.
If it wasn't reimbursed, they could deduct it on their taxes.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but they could still, against that money, they could list, list that as a non-reimbursed, uh, employee expenses.
Yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, same sign.
I had a question, uh, I guess we talked about last time. Was John gonna get a bid on what a boiler replacement would cost? Get several bid. You talked about that.
We talked about, we talked about this. There is, there are two boilers here.
We have one down here and we have one over there.
Yeah.
And then he circulate, or we'll shut one down and run the other one.
Just to have it in case.
And he keeps it up to date.
Uh, then spec, you gotta have it inspected every year.
Yeah, I was just wondering, you talked about.
He thought around four, I don't.
Fifty to seventy-five thousand, I think is the number he was.
Be nice to get a, a next time you bid on, let's see what it would cost to take care of that system.
But we do have a backup, so I mean, we out.
So.
Yeah.
Quite as bad as we thought.
No.
We don't want, we don't want what happened at the John Pine School.
School, no, it froze up.
Froze up and they have water leaking out of the ceiling under their classrooms and.
It was cold.
Just this week.
This week.
This week. Yeah, or in the last week, yeah.
Or going into a colder.
Yeah.
I mean, as you said, it went really chilly. So it would be nice and say, well, maybe have, look at somebody, look at redesigning the whole system that you don't have, or you could have muddy boilers or.
We would think this, and that would up it significantly, about fifty to seventy thousand if we redesigned the whole system.
Well, I just, when somebody looks at it, say, well, you could probably go with this and not have to do that.
That might take more engineering with it, because this is a steam system. That's a, that's different than just a hot water radiator system.
I wonder if we could get a bid though that says this bid is good for X amount of time? If we run into an emergency situation, it doesn't always suddenly go away.
I just think it would be nice to have a ballpark figure, but we're looking at.
I would say nobody's gonna do that.
So if we wanted to.
It's a good thought, but.
They might pull one out there, say, hey, we don't wanna, we don't wanna do it till June. They'll give you a bid for June, but then if you ain't gonna replace it by June, then that bid's out.
Rebid.
I would rather be preempted.
The only way you would get a, it's good for two years is they'll hedge it.
Have that made.
They'll have that a lot because they have no idea how much it's gonna go up in the next two years.
Then, then it builds up, two months down the road, now you're paying, uh, overrated.
Yeah.
I've never heard of an insurance policy like they could get for your home that if your refrigerator dies.
So we still didn't discuss any I three A.
Well, but going back to having a bid would potentially also, if there's any federal grants out there to help with energy efficiency type things that would help, but you have to have a bid to go ahead with.
I'll forget that. Have to.
Does the county get them?
That's something that, we can work with the energy district to find out if.
You'd have to talk to someone else. I mean, many of them are, you can get energy efficiency tax credits, which don't help us. So we, we need to make sure it's a actual grant or.
Dollar if it's a tax credit.
But that's where maybe the energy district could help, but we have to have a bid to go ahead with that.
Well, you gotta find, we have to find out if something exists first, before you even try to get a try to get a bid. To get this, if we're not, if there's not some money out there, we, I don't think that's a capital expense we wanna try to improve at this point. Our, our gas bill is about thousand eleven hundred dollars. If I remember right from our payables of this last go around, our electricity bill's about twenty-one.
I mean, it's a lot, but it's not as bad as some, like when we had the Smith Building, we were paying more than we, and that was, and so down at the new building, our gas bill is very reasonable, but electricity bill is actually high.
This is here, well.
Yeah, some months I think it's worse.
Get on that, I guess. Yeah, I was gonna bring up public health on their budget. We're paying, well, they got a hundred and ninety thousand and some change listed for home healthcare aid. And you could put another fifty on that for for billing and stuff too easily. So we'd be at two hundred and forty thousand and they're generating fifteen thousand dollars back for a service is not mandated by the state.
Wait, two hundred and forty thousand for what?
Home healthcare costs, approximate.
Of current.
I'm just going by what she has in her budget. I'm going by the budget.
With revenue, with revenue to offset it at fifteen.
Fifteen thousand, and that barely covers our, don't even cover our margin. That's the same as our mileage. Our mileage is fifteen thousand and that's what we're getting revenue back from doing this home healthcare.
Well, public health isn't a profit-based business.
I know that, but we are not.
We're true.
This here, this here is not mandated by the state of what we're doing.
It's two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
I mean, it's two hundred and twenty-five, twenty, twenty-five thousand, we're, and maybe for, maybe fourteen people are getting used out of it.
So you said there's fifteen thousand revenue, fifteen, an additional fifteen thousand in quotes?
Yeah, well, that's, that's in the included, that's in the expense.
Fifteen thousand.
We're back to about two twenties, it said.
Yeah, for, for maybe approximately fourteen people. At, at the most. So that's, you're looking at fourteen to fifteen thousand dollars for less than one tenth of one percent of the population for giving a service to that costs two hundred and fifty, two hundred and twenty-five, approximately seven dollars. To me, that's, that's not really fair to the rest of what public health is supposed to be used for. It's supposed to be used for the whole public realm. So coming up, we have one more year of the state or federal is gonna be done. We have that area on aging uh, grant we get. So this year we can only use twenty-five percent of that for any anything but the public, public health. And next year would be zero. It's all gonna be used for public health, for the whole public, not just one age group or whatever.
Yeah, that's right. I looked up state, state code, I think it's three thirteen, something, I've got it down at home. Is, is specifically charges the Board of Health with services that are for the benefit of the public. Not for individ, any individuals can be char, can be done at a fee commensurate with services. But everything, the focus of public health is to be focused towards general, the public itself and what they provide.
Is Krista on? Krista, are you on right now?
I mean, it's in the budget. It's right, black and white in the budget. There's no.
Breaker here next Thursday.
I've been here for four years and this is just bothering me now. It's, this is not right.
But we.
We don't, no. There's, to me, this is irresponsible. It's, yeah, and I've brought it up how many times? Yeah.
I would.
I mean, I wanna speak, don't wanna get interrupted again.
If we had that going over for, say, if there was a hundred people using it, if that was for a hundred people, we're doing, you could maybe say, hey, that is a bad one. You're down to less than one tenth of one percent of the population this money's going to. I mean, granted, we're all getting old, we're all gonna need care, but I don't think it's the county's obligation when we got infrastructure, we can't take care of and build.
I'm gonna ask you a question, but I don't wanna be interrupted.
Yep.
We've gotten misinformation on many things over the many years we've served. I just wanna make sure that the Department Head of Public Health, I'd, I'd love to have her come in and talk about this so that we can.
There's no misinformation here, surely.
I don't know.
It's your budget, read your budget.
I.
I don't know what the miss, she's got it in her budget that way.
I would like to see, have her come to the meeting and, so we can ask questions and say, what is this all about? Likewise.
Thank you, Roger.
I'll be back.
Thank you.
Likewise, does it cross over with funding we could be giving?
That's what I said, we could, we could take off there and give, which they. They said they're thirty-five on the waiting list and sixty to a hundred thousand. Well, that's roughly two thousand dollars per person. And we're paying fifteen thousand.
And that's right.
I mean, I'm just saying, they provide the services that we're doing at the cost.
So I guess I would like to have Krista come, so we can ask her that. And maybe we should ask previous people from the agency on aging to come and talk about, is there some way we could transfer some of that over there that these people would be taking care of?
And I think we could get.
Back for a walk.
Well, yeah, we, we'd better off giving money to area on aging and serve more people.
Uh, because I don't know the extent of the service.
Right now, there's.
That she's actually provide, is it a total share of, uh, you know, somebody who's totally incapacitated or is it just some tasks?
That isn't county's, is not, is not put in public health. That is not the county's obligation. We are not in the home health.
No, that's why I want.
The county is not.
That's why I'd like.
We're, we're here to provide public health for the county.
So that's why I'd like Krista to come, so I can ask her more detailed questions about that.
I found it interesting when I attended the, uh, January, uh, Win, Win Shee Board of Directors meeting, their annual, or their monthly meeting.
WinMed.
WinMed. And, uh, they had, their annual report was given by their Head of Home Healthcare and Hospice. And she made the statement during her presentation, I was just a person in the gallery, that they had, when we decert, decertified and released those home healthcare patients that we were taking care of, and, and we all know the budget numbers from where that came from. They picked up, I couldn't clarify for sure if it was all or most of those, uh, were picked up by their services and it only cost WinMed, Med, the cost of one home health aide to add to their staff to be able to accommodate it. And it was prof, it was profitable for them. So when I looked, when I heard that comment and their public discourse, compared with how effectively we have or have not been doing it, that raised some major flags. So I think with the, the quality of care that WinMed gives, in my estimation, is a real benefit to our county, period. Uh, between WinMed and Gunderson, we are very fortunate to have that kind of professional service available.
So there's.
It would be nice to see, uh, Public Health, Win Shee Medical Center and Northeast Iowa Agency on Aging have a meeting together and compare programs and see where there's overlap and where there's not, so that we could do the best we can for the elders in this community.
Yeah, I'm not against doing.
No, I would.
No, it's not the county's taxpayer dollar to be doing that.
I would prefer, I would prefer to have an RFP presented that gave us the option of the service being provided by one of those two healthcare providers, like four of the surrounding counties do. You know, I mean, they're paying, as what Ben found in querying the auditors last year, uh, they were spending less than a hundred and fifty thousand average between, on those four counties for public health where our services were, I think it's seven hundred and forty. And even those were hard numbers and those counties are getting public health services.
But that, that I think is where all of those agencies should get together, entities, should get together and talk about that. And then compare apples to apples, so to speak. So, because like I said, I don't know exactly the details of the services that we are providing to those seventeen clients.
I didn't say seventeen, approximately fourteen.
Fourteen clients and, uh.
Approximately fourteen.
Yes, and so we can all see, well, is there.
An approximately dollar.
Are there things in there that could be picked up by the private sector that would be more affordable for us?
Well, and it also might be interesting to know what Northeast Iowa on the aging provides those three hundred people within the county they provide, so it's, they can be helping. So anyway. What extent, what level are they providing services compared to?
So cost agency conversation would be great.
Yeah, Christie Wilson could certainly, she's the one who deals with, with those who spoke of that. So she would be a, she'd be an definite source.
Could Krista come on home day?
I got no one to ask her to come if she can come on.
That would be a good place to start.
Do you want me to add in? I mean, you can always take things out of proposed budget, just once you start the process, you can't add things in. You want me to put in on a fourth run, money in for NEI three A? You want me to put in on a fourth run, money in for NEI three A?
I think that they've got sixteen counties, did they say, and fourteen give to it. Black Hawk does it because it comes through Waterloo.
Counties.
Yeah, fourteen.
And Black Hawk's comes from Waterloo instead of the county itself, the agreement they have.
I think that'd be good to put it in them.
I think we should put it in there. An agency that they just came and presented to each of us that.
Then we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna put money in there, then we're going to cut the public health one. That's my take.
Well, I'd like to get more information first before we make the decision.
Yeah.
Because I need to understand.
Pretty simple to take five on public health. Northeast Iowa on aging.
Forty seven hundred.
Yeah.
It'd be real easy if we got rid of fifty thousand dollars worth of software services that we don't need.
Sixty.
Sixty. Is there a way that we can coordinate all of our I T? Through our I T department instead of departments doing individual software so that it comes underneath our I T per view instead of. People who are not necessarily I T experts.
Yeah, well, I'm sure that you could ask them to do that. I think, I mean, the big problem is that they signed contracts when they had. Twelve employees there that they're going to buy this many. Users for this software for X number of years and now they're down to. Many fewer employees, but they already have this contract in place. And I think that it's going to take Andy all to break the contract.
Well, I'm not necessarily speaking of breaking contracts. I'm just saying on, on anything, especially go forward. That it'd be, anything that's I T related goes through the I T department, including purchase of. Purchase of, of software and or equipment that are necessary because that doesn't necessarily mean that they're, that they even know.
I think I T, I T should be involved in deciding on equipment.
Yeah.
Um, I think it's hard to, I mean, even if, in this specific circumstance, if I T was involved. When they've signed the contract, it seemed appropriate. So now we're in a different situation, so.
Well, I don't, yeah, and I'm not sure that that was reviewed by.
I, no, I'm sure.
By I T at all.
I'm sure it wasn't, no. I'm just saying if they had, it might have.
How long, how long is the contract for?
Two more years.
Three year contract or something.
Just coming into, finishing up her first years.
Two more years.
But then she put it in her budget, over thirty thousand for that and I, we're still on a contract for sixty that you can't, that's not right. Yeah, she only budgeted thirty this year.
It's ongoing to pay for a contract that is sixty.
That's it, it, this is a harmful conversation for employees without them hearing it. It could be nice to have Krista here for this conversation.
It's in the budget, sure. It's in her budget. It's black and white.
Let's get her, let's have her attend so we can ask the questions.
If she's available next week.
Nope.
Good idea.
And we'll just hold off and then we'll come style agent.
They got to see.
You definitely know what's going on with the public health upset. And I, and we don't have to. We have, don't need a final run until that day of that public hearing on the levies, because that's the day that will be. And yeah, that's the day that will be, yeah, that, at that, after that public hearing on the levies, we'll turn around and set a public hearing then for the. Actual budget and that's when we have to have our numbers finalized.
I'd like to see.
Yeah, I mean, I needed, I had enough to have it entered by that day, but yeah.
We have Krista on the agenda Monday. If she's available, we could table this discussion, Northeast Iowa Agency on Aging to that, after that in the same agenda.
And then I'll just have budget discussion on there. You're going to be, you could be making small changes. Would we, when I ask Kristy Voltschuh? Just show up so that they can tell us to what extent.
Overlap there is.
Yeah.
That agency on aging, yeah, I think, yeah, I think.
If she's available, she's trying to cover.
She might be able to also at least join in by.
Yeah.
By soon, that's. What about?
To what extent services they provide.
It seems many times we see overlaps of services, even like, uh. Northeast Iowa Community Action, they have, they have services, many of these seem to have overlapping services.
So we'll notify Kristi.
I'll notify Krista to see when I can get her, if she can come next week or if not, as soon as I can.
And then let Kristy Voltschuh know.
I, and I, is that, do I have contact for her?
Otherwise, Mike, I will be reaching out to her.
I'll. I do have mine.
Yeah.
And they gave us a pretty good overview of the services that they offer today. Um, it's a lot of work other than just the meals we mentioned.
It's lots.
I won't prepare a fourth run yet. We'll keep that in mind over the next two weeks. Are you not those details?
Yeah.
To her.
I'll second.
Motion and second for adjournment. Is it, did you say aye?
Aye.
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 Take it along. Yeah, great.
We're, yeah, we're out of luck.
I was running along right after you were waiting. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, guys.
Yes, dude.
Yeah. I think paper's got a lot.
No, he's, he's decorum news. Yeah. Then we'll get back in the rack and summon.
Just keep doing your job and let's just hit the print.
But I think it's very good.
Well, thank you. Yeah.
Just wanted you to know that. Thank you.
Have a good day.
Yeah.
Months ago, someone asked me, came I, just been on the street if I was, if I was Alex.
How many board members are in the room?
There are still three supervisors in the annex.
Six counting.
No, yes, there are still three supervisors in the annex.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, you need to, but, uh. Oh, yeah, Mike, Mike was. Really?
Yeah, they send that to you?
This is wild.
They get, that's where you're being mixed up now.
Well, that was weird because Mike, I mean, I see Mike, you know.
Oh, every day.
You know, and like, it's no, I'm, I'm, I think it was. Yeah, I, I know. It's a, that is a ginger. Like, a ginger, you know, right, right in here, L G M, and that's that. And that's sad. And he acted so like unhappy, like, like really let down. I'm the guy with, where's the, some time as a supervisor.
I'll pass wire compliment the, uh, for both of you, the agencies we were addressing at, uh. The Valentine's gathering, it's family and they commented on the quality of the reporting on it.
Oh, man.
The newspaper and the store news. How they're appreciating it, maybe being better.
Let's get it fixed.
I, I like.
It's vastly better in both.
I think so, yeah. Yeah. They, they, they made a good choice when they, they're, I think.
I love words, man.
Oh.
I, I was sitting at night, of course.
Could be a little bit too, that's weird, you know, we, we quote more right through the.
Do you know that?
Two supervisors and we can close the meeting. Thank you for those online.
Afraid, I was afraid that I got.
Getting this, getting this helpless, like, uh, several.
We were ending up.